So I have at seven o'clock, looks like we potentially have all the members of the planning board. So I'd like to convene this September ninth. Twenty twenty five meeting of the Wakefield Planning Board. So roll call attendance. Bill Spalding.
Here.
Kevin York.
Here.
Theo Noel.
Here.
And Kristen Weekly.
Here.
All members are present, so first order of business is related to the approval of the meeting minutes from August twelfth. Twenty twenty five and August twenty sixth, twenty twenty five. Has anyone had, has everyone had a chance to review and does anyone have comments related to the August twelfth meeting minutes? Uh, seeing none, do I hear a motion to accept the August twelfth, twenty twenty five meeting minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Theo, seconded by Kristen, roll call vote, Bill.
Abstain.
Kevin?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
And Theo?
Yes.
Uh, motion passes, the August twelfth meeting minutes are approved. Uh, has, does anyone have any comments related to the August twenty sixth meeting minutes?
No.
Seeing none, do I hear a motion to accept the meetings as, meeting minutes as presented?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Oh, second.
Move by Bill, seconded by Theo, roll call vote, Kristen?
Yes.
Kevin?
Abstain.
Theo?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
Motion passes. So moving on to item number three, the one fifty four, one fifty eight Salem Street subdivision. The public hearing that I uh, is opening. So I will open it to Mr. McGrail. For an update on the process of the project.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, as you're aware, um, last week we submitted, finally, we're able to get revised plan and. Uh, drainage, uh, stormwater management report, revised landscaping plan. Uh, we submitted that to your board, we've also submitted to. Uh, the Conservation Commission and uh, the zoning board. So I think. Uh, we're back on track, we were waiting for um, for the uh, revisions to be made, they have been completed. Um, they've been submitted to the town engineer uh, for his review. We'll hope to have obviously a report from him shortly. We've also um, shared them. With our neighbors um, at Navliss Way, um, um, I've corresponded with Attorney Genie who represents them and. Shared it with them. Uh, they obviously would not have had time to review it and digest or be ready to comment on it, um, because they just got it uh, last week. Um, and as the town engineer, so. Um, what we probably just for the benefit of everybody tonight, I'd like um, Rich Williams to, if he may, to. Just kind of walk through the highlights of the changes. Um, uh, just to kind of give uh, the board a, um, uh, a synopsis of what. What, what the uh, highlights are that have been uh, changed on the plan, if that will be okay.
Uh, I think that would be beneficial for all parties involved.
Uh, I'd like to share my screen if that's okay.
You should be able to.
Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay. So, um. The proposed lot layout is the same, that there has been no change to. Any lot lines or the road layout. Um, the changes I would say are. Um, minor in nature, but um. I'm, I will take you through them. Um. This is probably the best sheet to. This is the best sheet to take you through. Um, we made some minor revisions to the stormwater system. Uh, one of, one of the uh. The comments was that the infiltration components of these systems need to be fifty feet from the wetland, so we've done that. We've moved um, this, the subsurface infiltration system and. The um. The uh, stormwater pond. Uh, in this location, both are outside the fifty foot. Um, there's a, there's a small pond over here which. Uh, is within the fifty foot, but is lined, so there's no infiltration component to that. We've added um, a. Uh, stone trench behind lot four is requested by. The Butters, um, uh, civil engineer. We. Added topography. Um. On the neighbor's property showing that um. That we're not uh, pushing water onto their property. Uh, we've made some minor changes to uh, water and sewer. Um, locations, uh, and most of that work has taken place on lot three. Um, and within the uh. Within the condominium portion of the development, uh, we've. Been asked to tie into the sewer behind uh, units five through eight. And uh, directly into the um. Into the sewer that's within that sewer easement. Um. And minor changes to the water layout that are. Um. Instead of having the water come behind units one through four, uh, we're bringing it in interior. Um, within the parking lot. Area. We have uh, removed uh, patios that originally showed in the sewer easement. Uh, are now outside of that easement. Um, and uh, just uh. The shape of those has changed in order to do that. Uh, we did communicate with um. With the electric department and have shown transformers based on uh, their input. Transformers are, uh, there's two transformers located uh, up in this location here. Um. We added the actual locations of the uh, the water and gas uh, connections within Salem Street. We added um, a low planting zone. As to accommodate the uh, the site distance in Salem Street as part of the, the uh, traffic and site distance study. We added uh, details of retaining walls uh, in several locations. Um. Those are on the detail sheet. And um. Added a limit of work, which is um, this. Line with the dots uh, surrounding. Surrounding the site. Um. That we've also um. Provided a new uh, updated stormwater report based on those changes and. Um. That's, you know, the limit of, of, of the work and um. That, that captures the overview. Think I missed anything, Brian?
Well, as you said, we updated the landscaping plan. Um. And are we gonna, are we gonna do some work on that sewer pipe in the easement, Rich? Is that gonna be? Um, updated?
Well, we said we would update it, and I think that's going to be one of the comments from the engineering department. Um. We said we'd do uh, whatever they thought was best, but we are willing to replace um, this section. Of sewer, we are doing a fair amount of work in there to connect those pipes and thought it would be a good idea, but. Um, left it up to the engineering department.
Okay.
Thank you for that update. Uh, I have a couple of things I wanted to ask, uh, as you guys are going through the, the rest of the process, just things that I know have come up. Previously, um, has there been any thought, further thought? Given related to snow removal and snow management as it relates to the property?
Yeah, we have some um, some snow storage areas, but then um. Also. Um, anticipate that there would be something in the condo documents for this area. Um. That would um, require the removing snow from the site if it's necessary.
And then where did you land as it relates to the, I think one of the, the opening questions last time we talked was. Related to lighting, um, specifically of the now proposed Timberwood Circle. Space? Like the street lighting?
Yeah, we don't have an answer from the light department on that. Um, that's not an easy answer to get from them. So we're still working on that, Mr. Chair. We want, we, we want a low profile light, we don't see a lot of need for lighting here. Um, so you know, but the, the trick of it is, is to find something. We talked to um, Vin McMahon, he said they might have some stuff, you know, in stock that we can use. Because they're very hesitant for us to spec our own item there, because then if it becomes a public way, they don't have the parts.
Understood.
So we, we're still working on that, that's an open item.
And then did uh. I, I. I know that there's been significant coordination and discussion with the Butters related to the drainage. Have you get the implementation of the work you guys have been putting in? Um, has that, you know, have those conversations been productive? Slash, you know, where do you stand as it relates to the, those, those generalized conversations?
Yeah, so the Butters have been uh, very good to work with, they have an engineer who has given us. Uh, a detailed uh, correspondence on their concerns. And um, we, the design that Rich has done here, the changes. We believe have accounted for those, we've, we've shared these plans with them. And we've shared a response memo to their engineer. Um, so we're hoping um, that, that we've um, responded to them, if not, we'll continue to, our efforts to do that. Um, and then, as I mentioned, I think um, you know, they need some time to look at this, so. Hopefully, um, you know, before our next meeting, our two engineers will be able to talk and um. Either say everything's fine, or we'll get some requests for further alterations that we can consider.
Okay. Okay, uh, I'd like to open up to other members of the planning board, anyone else have any? Questions, concerns, comments they'd like to bring up at this time? Mr. Spalding?
Um, yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair, thanks for bringing up the snow, um. Uh, when the um. Mr. Williams, you mentioned the water changed, what was the reason for? The changing of the, I just want to clarify, was this for the drainage? From the. Structures down through, or was this for water supply?
The water supply. Okay, and it, and it was more related to where the meters were gonna go. And future uh, maintenance, if, if they needed to uh, get in there, they didn't want to be in someone's backyard doing it, so. Um. Doing, doing maintenance to the, to the water uh, distribution system.
Alright, thanks for clarifying, and this might be more of a um, comment for Attorney McGrail. But what is, are you on the agenda for the Conservation Commission this week, or?
No, um, we are.
Is it, is it next week?
Um, I'm gonna tell you.
It's a weird month where September kind of started on the Tuesday.
I think the sixteenth is the meeting.
Oh, the sixteenth, okay.
Yeah, so we're on, we're not on for the zoning board tomorrow night, the next meeting, Conservation on the sixteenth. Um, and then um. The Board of Appeals on the, we'll be back to you probably in the twenty, we'll be back to you on the twenty third, and then back at the zoning board on the twenty fourth.
Alright, that's what I was getting at, to where with our comments tonight and hearing from the public tonight. I was wondering, it, it would be good just so the public understands too, if they don't already, um, that whole lineup of meetings.
Yeah, so the lineup again for the public is um. Where we'll be at the Conservation Commission on the sixteenth. Will be at the Planning Board on the twenty third. And then at the Zoning Board of Appeals on the twenty fourth.
Great, thank you.
And the intent is between now and potentially the twenty third, coming back before this board would be that you would get. The formal, and, and the board would also get formalized feedback from engineering in order to have a, a, a true. Set of comments as it relates to this.
That's our, that's what we're hoping for.
Okay. Okay, um, Mr. Spalding, any other questions, concerns?
No, thanks, I'm good.
Any, any other member of the board have anything?
Yeah, um, I, I think just to clarify, you talked about um. The topography on the. The, what, the southern edge of the site? Not, not Navliss, but the other, but the other circle, do we have topography for, for Navliss and uh, thinking really just about the. Again, the tightness of the road against the lot line, um. I know that was a, a bit of a concern, maybe more for, for snow removal, but. Um.
Yeah, well, we, we have, we have, um.
Mind zooming in?
Yeah, I don't.
Oh, you can't, okay, nevermind.
No, I can't, I said, I said I don't, I don't mind.
Oh, sorry.
Yep, we've got, um. We did take a shot there, and we got detailed topo over here.
Alright.
And we took shots adjacent to the house at one thirty eight.
Alright. Alright.
Anything else, Theo?
No, I, um, it's, that's just helpful to keep. Uh, to, to, to sort of, no, no, I'm good.
Yeah. Anything else from uh, Kevin or Kristen?
So I, I actually had a question about like, which I know is probably more conservation's uh, purview, but. The plants that are gonna be, um, there, is there, are the, I know it's very, obviously very close to wetlands, are there going to be plants that are specific to? Uh, wetland, like native wetlands, or is there any plan on that? Right now?
Um, yeah, there are. There is some conservation mix that's proposed in certain locations, like in the ponds. Um. And. Uh, along. Or between uh, unit eight and the lot line, and then up the uh, up the lot line, this will all be conservation mix. Um, and then the rest, the entire twenty five foot buffer will remain undisturbed. Bye bye.
Anything else?
No, Rich, if you could, um, on the, even though it's offsite, the planning board might be interested, the walkway that we're putting from the um. From the uh, townhouses up to the, held the sack. Can you zoom in on that, is that on this plan, or is that on just on the?
Yeah, it's on, it's on this plan, it's a little bit hard to see, but. Um, we are proposing a walkway adjacent to unit one, between unit one and the driveway, so that folks can walk up. Um, and get on the sidewalk at the circle.
Just some pedestrian connectivity, we didn't have that before, they would have been walking on the uh, driveway coming out of the um. The townhouse project, so the ZBA asked that we put a walkway there to connect to the sidewalk.
That's a nice addition, thank you.
Okay, anything else from the board before I open it up to the. Members of the public for comment?
Rich, you mentioned on the snow removal, some of it may have to be taken offsite, but there were a couple designated areas for snow storage, could you remind us where those are?
Yes. Or cheated something. You know, it might be on the uh, ZBA set. But I'll, I'll point them out, this, um, these islands between. Um. The garages. So there's a garage with a driveway here, and garage with a driveway here, we've got some areas to store snow here, here. 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 And a triangle here. Um, and then. A little bit of storage between the roadway and the wall. And then the rest of it um, would, would need to be taken offsite if we ran out of storage there.
Okay, thank you. In those areas in between the garages for the units. The eight condo units, is that just grass, grassy area?
Well, there's other landscaping and there's some shrubs, but um. They would be uh, you know, tolerant of that.
Okay.
Snow storage.
Thanks.
Okay, any other members of the board have anything else they want to discuss at this time? Seeing none, then uh, I will open it up for any comments from members of the public. As a reminder for members of the public, that there is no vote anticipated at this meeting. Today, and that this is to be confined to the uh, subdivision. Subdivision comments only. As or, and also, if you do wish to speak, please raise your hand. On the Zoom. Turn on your camera if you have the ability to do so, and before you start talking, state your name and your address, so. With that being said, any member, any member of the public wish to speak, uh, feel free to raise your hand and we can open it up to public comment. Looks like I'm not seeing anyone raising their hands, so if, if not, then I will move on. Okay, so in that case. Uh, I'll close public comment at this time, and then um, before we move on to the next item on our agenda, um. I think I heard you say Attorney McGrail, that you would like to continue this meeting to the nine twenty three, twenty twenty five. Uh, planning board meeting?
Correct.
Okay, I, I don't think, I don't think that we can accommodate that as part of our agenda, so um, we'll plan on seeing you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, uh, thank you very much, I think, I think, I, I guess I respectfully request a, a motion and a vote to continue it to that uh, meeting, Mr. Chair. Just for the record.
Fair enough, uh, so in that case, do I hear a motion to continue the one fifty four, one fifty eight Salem Street subdivision?
Just to, hold on, just a point of order, Mr. Chair. It's a open, I don't think we need to continue it, it's just an open meeting unless Attorney McGrail, you think differently.
You, you have to continue it to a certain date for the public to know of, on the record, when it's gonna be.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, in order to make sure that Butters have the ability to participate.
Oh, we didn't continue this to October first already?
That's the extension of time.
Correct, we, we've extended through, I believe it's December, December first or December thirty first.
We've extended your time to uh, make a decision till December thirty one.
December thirty one.
Hopefully, hopefully, we're not gonna need that, but we just wanted to put it as a safe harbor, um, we didn't have to deal with it going forward a while ago.
Yep. So we, I think we do need to have a, a, a continuance of the public hearing, but we have an extension of time as it relates to when. It would be deemed approved by the planning board if we took no action.
Alright.
So in that case, uh, anyone else have any comments before, um, potentially putting a motion on the table?
I'm happy to make a motion that we continue the public hearing to uh, September twenty third.
So motion to continue the public hearing by Theo, do I hear a second?
Second.
So motion by Theo, seconded by Bill, roll call vote, Kristen?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Theo?
Yes.
Myself, yes as well, motion passes five, nothing.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So in that case, I will close item number three, one fifty eight, one fifty, one fifty four, one fifty eight Salem Street subdivision, and move on to. Item number four, items not anticipated by the chair. So I'll open it up, uh, anyone else have any, any other members of the planning board have anything they'd like to bring up at this time? Uh, Mr. Noel?
Uh, this is actually just a, and uh. Kind of an advertisement, um, the. The Housing Trust uh, administers the Wakefield Rental Assistance Program, and so that's continuing to take. Uh, applications and uh, is a, a useful tool. Um, to uh, throw that out there, and um, this is sort of a, an open question, um, any update on the housing production plan? Yeah, okay.
None, no. Still going through the approval uh, with the state.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So in that case, there's a handful of things that I do want to make sure the board is aware of, and a, and a couple of other items of business. So first one is the um, accessory dwelling unit bylaw. We talked at the last meeting about how the state had partially approved the bylaw. Um, and there were some, some elements of the bylaw that the state had deemed were not acceptable and had struck. Uh, as part of that, so the guidance we got from Attorney Mullen. Was that the, the next steps would, would involve us revising the bylaws, deleting the disapproved text. And that, the, that bylaw would need to be posted as amended, and. Um, and then. After that, uh, uh, specific posting period, the general code could be updated, so. Uh, Marissa, I, my understanding is that you were taking the lead as a instance postings, and that, that uh, general code. Notification, for lack of a better term, so I, I, I can't, I can't remember, I think we have, it has to be posted for. A specific amount of time before it can be posted to the general code.
Correct, yeah, so I handed the um. The text off to Betsy, our town clerk yesterday, um, so she went around to each of the precincts and posted it in their designated locations. Um, so they have to be up there for, or we have to wait ninety days before we can submit to Ecode, so ninety days as of. Yesterday, September eighth. Have to do the mental calculation, but give or take December eighth. Is when we can submit to Ecode.
Yep, so, so basically at this point, from the, from the board's perspective, I would say that there's. No action required in order to, it's an, I'll say administrative in nature in terms of between now and when the end of. And the processes, and most importantly, there's no requirement to go to town meeting.
Correct.
So anyone else have any questions as it relates to that? No, the next thing I've got is, um, so I think there was some interest expressed at the last meeting. Related to a street renaming bylaw, so I know Marissa, you were gonna take a pass at. Uh, trying to come up with a draft, and I think that might be something that would be um. Be available shortly, that we could pick up as a, as a group, so just more. Notification on the board, that's something that is potentially gonna be coming in the, in the upcoming days.
Yeah, I'll probably look to have it for the October meeting, but I wouldn't anticipate putting it on the warrant for the um. The fall town meeting or early winter town meeting, I would think it would probably just make the best sense to do it. In the spring, I, I don't think there's really a sense of urgency right now, I don't think street renaming. Applications are quite common, um, but the. The language in the bylaw amendment was to give both the town clerk and the planning board certain discretion to waive. Um. Waive certain requirements of the application process and procedure, so the town clerk will have it in the draft that I'm coming up with, the town clerk will. Have the discretion to waive certain application requirements, um, like a fee. If the, um, you know, the town is submitting the application like we had the last time, um, and then the planning board. Could have the discretion to waive certain requirements as it relates to the public hearing process. Um, so still, um. Looking through it and just making sure everything is good for our first round, and then I, I'll um, look to bring it to you guys in October.
Uh, Mr. Spalding, I noticed that you raised your hand?
No, uh, Marissa clarified it, I knew it's more of amending the street. Naming bylaw that we already have, I know it's getting dark here, sorry. Um, yeah, that, that's fine, it was clarified, thanks.
Awesome.
Thank you, so Marissa, just as a placeholder, I'm gonna put that as a item for the October fourteenth meeting. If that makes sense, okay?
Yep, awesome.
Okay, uh, next item I've got is, there is a, uh, the Town Day that is coming up, and there's been a, um. Uh. Request or a notice has gone out to all boards, if they're interested in having a booth. So I know that we did not have one last year, but I wanted to afford the board the opportunity if folks are interested in. Uh, participating in Town Day in that. Manner, um. And Bill, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe in the past we have, but we have not in the last couple of years, is my recollection.
I think Bill loved the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, that, that's correct, um. We, we did it, uh, my, at least my first year, um, when is Town Day?
Is the September twenty seventh.
Nine twenty seven.
Uh, and Theo, can you remind me, when we did participate, what was the nature? What did we? And Theo, can you remind me, when we did participate, what was the nature? What did we?
Um. Yeah, we had a joint table with um. With the ZBA, and we were actually right next to Conservation Commission, like it would be nice to be able to do that again. Um, because then I I think you can actually have a little more synergy between the. The the two and or between the three, and we basically used it as a way of uh. What does the planning board do? What does ZBA do? What does Conservation Commission do? And it it becomes a a pretty uh friendly way of talking about. The town and and um, so it's, it's, you know, it was, it was a pretty friendly way. We actually, you know. Asked people to name their favorite things about the town and things like that, and um, you know, I. We can do similar things like that or find some other ways of engaging. Um, so um. You know, pin the tail on the housing production plan, what do you want? Um. So um, that kind of thing. That was funny. Um. The, so um. Uh, I would be. Uh, happy to do that, um, so um. So and and happy to reach out to Conservation and uh and ZBA too.
All right, any other members of the planning board interested in participating as it relates to that? Effort?
Um, didn't they have um a beer hall at the? Um, I mean. People to excuse themselves from the table. I don't know if that's gonna be the case this year, but. You know. All right.
What, what are the times typically of Town Day?
Yeah.
Sometimes it's tough with work, so I'm usually working on Saturdays, but I'm happy to attend. Assuming I can get away from work.
One to four?
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can plan to be there. I think that will work.
All right.
I can try to be there too. My computer died, but I'm on my phone now.
Oh.
Okay, so in that case, uh, I think Theo, what I'll do is I will forward this, I think I'll appoint you, it sounds like. You're the one who has the most solid um availability, so I'll, if you want, I'll uh forward this over to. To you and then I'll uh do the registration form.
Yeah, great.
Yeah.
I'll fuck there, please.
Okay. Uh, any, so that's all I've got on that item. Anyone else have any other items not anticipated by the chair they want to discuss?
Tomorrow, Bylaw Review Committee has our first meeting in a while, actually, uh and I believe the plan is to take a vote. To uh recommend a warrant article to Town Council um for all of the work we've been doing for the past three years.
Wow. Yeah.
Well, that's awesome.
Yeah.
That, you know. Close to the end or the beginning of the end.
Yeah.
Um, so congratulations and uh look forward to to having those public hearings.
Yeah, yeah.
What should I just miss? My computer went down.
The Bylaw Review Committee is preparing on. I think tomorrow, you said, Kevin?
Yeah, we have a meeting tomorrow, and I believe the plan is to take a vote to recommend the um. Bylaw revisions we've been working on uh to go to Town Council for a warrant article.
And then Planning Board, we have public hearings on October fourteenth and twenty eighth.
Are those the dates that we had mapped out, Jim?
Uh, I believe, so it was October fourteenth and twenty eighth, yes.
Okay.
And we had talked about the fourteenth, potentially trying to do that in person somewhere, and then the twenty eighth having a, the public. The public meeting be by Zoom. Okay.
We don't, we don't have a, we don't have a date for the the fall. Town meeting yet, right?
At my knowledge, no.
Okay, yeah.
I believe it's recommended as November eighth. Did they? Did they vote on it last night or no?
That's a Saturday.
Yeah, it's written someplace, November eighth, whether that's confirmed yet.
Okay. Okay. Any uh, anyone else have any other items that are not anticipated before we potentially go to adjournment?
Um, just one quick update from our department. Aaron and I are. Working on reviewing the master plan. Um, we set up a timeline where we're going section by section. Making edits. Um, we've gotten through the first two and are meeting tomorrow to go over the third section, which is historic and cultural resources. Um, so about every two weeks, we are working on or meeting together to go over our edits and in the meantime, working. Making our own edits on an individual basis. Um, so I think maybe when we're about halfway through, we'll um. Reach back out to the former advisory group um and send out our clean version, a cleaner version to them to see. If they have any additional comments or questions, and hopefully we can have the entire document cleaned up. Before the end of the year, fingers crossed, so.
Good luck.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else have anything else?
No.
Okay, not seeing anything. In that case, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to it, to adjourn.
Motion by Theo, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by Theo, seconded by Bill, roll call vote, Kristen?
Yes. Right here.
Yes. Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
And myself, yes, so thank you everyone for the meeting and uh look forward to seeing you guys in a couple of weeks.